Thank you for joining the Dougherty County Board of Commissioners Commission Meeting. Your Dougherty County Board of Commissioners is chaired by Christopher Kohelis. Your Dougherty County Commissioners include, from District One, Lamar Hudgens; from District Two, Victor Edwards; from District Three, Clinton Johnson; from District Four, Russell Gray; from District Five, Gloria Gaines; and from District Six, Anthony Jones. We are also joined by County Administrator Michael McCoy; Assistant County Administrator Scott Addison; County Clerk Juwan Ware; and County Attorney Spencer Lee. This is your Dougherty County Board of Commissioners Commission Meeting.
All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The Dougherty County Commission Work Session for November ninth, 2020 will begin with roll call. Commissioner Hudgens.
Here.
Fisher Edwards.
Here.
Fisher Johnson.
Here.
Fisher Gray.
Here.
Fisher Gaines.
Here, thank you.
Fisher Jones.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, here.
Good morning. All right, first item for discussion is the minutes, the minutes of the October nineteenth regular meeting and October twenty-sixth work session. Any comments, questions, or discussion on that item? We'll now move on to delegations. This is where the commission will hear comments on those items pertaining to Dougherty County for which a public hearing has not been held or scheduled. Please be brief to the point and considerate of time for others. We have three separate delegations that have signed up to be heard today. The first is our EMA Director and Fire Chief, Chief Cedric Scott, who is present to provide an update on emergency management agency. Good morning, Chief. And just by way of an update to the commission, the reason why I asked for Chief Scott to be present today is there have been some ongoing discussions with the city relative to emergency management, and I wanted us to likewise have a discussion with Chief Scott, who's the Emergency Management Director. And let me first start by saying, Chief Scott, I want to say that you have done an outstanding job, not only during Hurricane Michael, but also during this pandemic. And I'm very pleased and thankful for your cooperation, collaboration, and hard work. And I know when you first signed on to this job, you certainly didn't imagine that you were going to have Hurricane Michael and then a pandemic when we were number three in the world. It's been, it has been a wild ride, hasn't it?
It has, it has.
It's been a pleasure to work with you as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Same here. I want to begin by saying good morning to commission. It's an honor to be before you today and continue to serve as your fire chief and EMA Director to our county administrator. This is an emergency management update. The chairman is correct, and I'll talk about that a bit this morning and then allow for any questions you may have. Since January twenty seventeen, the leadership, direction, and oversight of emergency management services have not been provided in a manner consistent with the following enabling documents: House Bill four eighty-nine, the Service Delivery Strategy; City of Albany Ordinance ninety-two dash one eleven; NOR Dougherty County Resolution ninety-two dash zero one two. Therefore, the City Commission has established an emergency management task force to review and clarify the delivery of emergency management services in Albany and Dougherty County, Georgia. It is important to mention that the City Commission has no desire to have a separate emergency management agency. In fact, the task force was encouraged to reach out to Dougherty County Government to assure input in the review of this important matter. As a reminder, the City of Albany pursuant to House Bill four eighty-nine, most recently updated in twenty seventeen, is responsible for providing emergency management services countywide. In addition, per City of Albany Ordinance ninety-two eleven and Dougherty County Resolution ninety-two dash zero one two, the mayor of the City of Albany, Georgia separately or jointly with the chairman, the Board of Commissioners of Dougherty County, Georgia, or in their absences, the county administrator and the city manager, may determine that an emergency or disaster exists. If appropriate, a local state of emergency declaration is prepared, signed, and forwarded to the EMA Director to be sent to JIMA through Web EOC. Of importance to mention today is the Local Emergency Operations Plan. It is one document that needs to be updated. The LEOP describes the management and coordination of resources and personnel during periods of emergency. Specifically, the roles and responsibilities at the following levels should be reviewed and clarified. When a disaster occurs, response happens at four levels: Incident Command System, which is the tactical activities that aim to stabilize an incident, save lives, and protect property and the environment. This area is usually led by the Incident Commander; Emergency Operations Center, which provides incident support activities, including strategic coordination, resource acquisition, and information gathering. This is usually led by the EOC Director, in our case, the Emergency Management Director. And then there's the Multi-Agency Coordination Group, commonly called the MAC Group. This is the Policy Group. This area provides policy guidance to incident personnel, supports resource prioritization, and enables decision-making. This area is led by a senior leader or elected official. And finally, the Joint Information System, which ensures coherent, consistent, and accurate messaging and communication with the media and public. This is usually led by the Public Information Officer. We must keep these important tasks in mind as we update our plans and ready ourselves for future emergency management incidents and emergencies. Consequently, we must clarify the roles and expectations of both city and county government so that when the next incident strikes, we will be able to respond in a coordinated manner. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have, and hopefully that provides a brief update on the recent establishment of the task force in the city, as well as an update on our emergency management.
Turn things over to Fisher Johnson a second. I wanted to review some of our discussions because, and I want to say this. I think it's important to note that while we're doing this, there's no sense that the Emergency Management Agency has done anything other than perform in a stellar fashion. What we've talked about, Chief, is, and we've both really pored over a lot of historical documents.
Yes.
What I have found, and I've consulted with County Attorney Spencer Lee about a year or two ago, and I've read every document that there is, and we have about three or four different levels of documents. You have state law.
Yes.
Typically, emergency management is performed by the county. It's a county function typically across the state, and that's actually how it's recognized in the legislation. Though a city may have its own emergency management agency, that obviously doesn't make sense in a community such as ours where we have one unincorporated county and one city, and we have done very well by marrying those two together.
Agreed.
Would you agree with that, Chief?
I do agree, yes, sir.
And that is an important function because you have one county and one city. The entirety of the city is within the county, and all citizens within the county, it's one big umbrella.
Yes.
So then you have your local legislation, which was passed, how many years ago was that passed, Chief?
Go back, it was nineteen ninety-six, and then it was recently updated in twenty seventeen.
The Service Delivery Agreement was not the Ordinance.
Now, the ordinances go back to nineteen ninety-two. We have an ordinance and a resolution that takes us back to nineteen ninety-two.
And thank you.
Yes, sir.
And what I've learned from my historical research is, emergency management back then was viewed far differently than it is now.
Indeed.
And frankly, and just philosophically in government, emergency management was really viewed as an outlier. It wasn't prioritized the same way that police, fire, sheriffs, deputies, it was not that. And so often it was, well, it was handled in a different way. Would you agree with that, Chief?
I do, yes, sir.
And there's been a move in government, in progressive communities, to better prioritize emergency management. Would you agree with that, Chief?
Yes.
And back then, in nineteen ninety-two, that was frankly sort of the philosophical framework for emergency management being completed. Now, obviously at that time, I seriously doubt that anyone thought that there was going to be four presidentially declared natural disasters and a pandemic within the course of thirty-six months. I don't think anyone would have predicted that. You know, at this point, you almost wonder when the waters are going to come. But certainly, if it has done, if two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and twenty have done anything, it has been to make this community and the county and the city understand exactly how important emergency management is. Would you agree with that, Chief?
I do, yes.
So, I go, we have, there's legislation that typically places this with the county. Then you have a service delivery agreement where we've contracted with the city to provide services, but it's still a countywide agency and function. And in fact, our emergency management agency is called the Dougherty County Emergency Management Agency. Would you agree with that?
It is, yes.
And we then have local ordinances, which were passed in nineteen ninety-two, which delineate certain things or certain powers or certain authorities, which by my read, in some ways are actually in conflict or different than what state legislation says, and in fact, can be confusing. We then have a Service Delivery Strategy.
Yes.
And then we have an emergency management plan.
Yes.
Which most certainly is not consistent with what we have on the state law level, what we have in our local ordinances. But it is in fact more specific in clarifying and delineating what the roles and authorities of city and county officials are. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
And I'm not saying it's perfect, but I'm saying it's more specific, but it's also different and in conflict with these other areas. And then I understand, we've dug in and we've actually asked the previous EMA Director, who was Jim Vaught, and he was also the EMS Director. That's correct, right? He was the EMS Director, is that right, Mike?
I believe so.
Right. Which was a county position. Correct?
Well, I believe he worked for the Albany Fire Department.
Jim Vaught?
Jim Vaught.
Well, Vaught was a, he was a city employee, yes, sir.
He was a city employee?
He was, yes, sir.
All right, so we had Jim was in the leadership position at the time that he remembers a plan being actually adopted. Though, our historical research has failed to determine that one was ever formally adopted by the city and the county commission. Maybe it did, maybe it didn't. We've got a plan, it's on file with the state. It is, it's the plan by which frankly, I've tried to operate, as well as the mayor's tried to operate. And then, and I mean that historically with respect to Mayor Hubbard as well. And then separate and distinct from that, you have the interactions you have with state government, and JIMA specifically is what I'm calling upon, recalling, and how they believe our emergency management agency works and operates. And so what I think you've delineated is the need for clarification of all, and we need to make it cohesive.
Yes.
I'm going to read a letter which I've previously forwarded to the chief, and I would hope, and I'm going to invite some discussion from this commission because I think, and I am very, let me put it this way. Having lived through four of these, had a presidentially declared, four presidentially declared natural disasters and a pandemic, and being responsible in the way that I've had to be responsible, I would say this is a very close subject to me. And seeing the good, the bad, and the ugly, and I've seen the good, the bad, the ugly, and overall, and I want to make sure I say this again, overall, our emergency management agency and our public safety officials have responded very, very well. One of the things that I requested after the two thousand seventeen Albany-Doherty County tornadoes, I actually requested the JIMA Director, Homer Bryson, and his team to come to Albany and perform an after-action review. That was a joint request by myself and Mayor Hubbard. They spent a lot of time with former fire chief Ron Rowe, and who was also EMA Director, interviewing staff, poring over documents. And y'all may recall, we had a few hiccups during the two thousand seventeen disasters. And I'm not saying that to like blame, but they were some significant hiccups that we got through frankly, you know, after we ironed some things out. And that was, it was a good process to go through because it delineated, I think frankly, some of the conflicts that exist with respect to city and county functions, as well as with respect to the chain of command. So I'm going to read this letter for the record. It's dated June eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. Dear Chairman Kohelis, as a follow-up to the May thirty-first, two thousand eighteen after-action review of the two thousand seventeen Albany-Doherty County tornado events, the Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency makes the following recommendations for consideration by the Dougherty County Board of Commissioners. To be in compliance with the statewide emergency management construct in Georgia, a county emergency management agency director should be appointed to reports directly to a duly elected county official. JIMA and Homeland Security further recommends this EMA Director be a full-time employee of Dougherty County to ensure the multifaceted responsibilities of this position can be addressed without interference from additional or conflicting job responsibilities. Considering the size of Dougherty County, JIMA Homeland Security also recommends the county EMA Director be supplied at least one additional full-time staff member to provide continuity while establishing and maintaining a robust emergency management program to assist in the many facets of planning, preparedness, prevention, response, recovery, and mitigation. Additional county EMA responsibilities will likely include school safety, training, exercises, public outreach, and numerous other county-specific requirements. As always, JIMA and Homeland Security is available to assist you in developing your emergency management program to its fullest potential. Sincerely, Homer Bryson. Now, that was a review obviously of actions that took place well before you were here, Chief. And they don't have anything to do with people or personnel because everyone has done an outstanding job. But that is a recommendation that I do think, and I hope, that we can talk about because historically speaking, in the seventeen tornadoes, to be frank, we had some conflicts that existed between those different functions and caused some miscommunications on behalf of our community. And I lived through that, I don't ever live through that again. And what I really hope, and I'm going to ask Mr. McCoy to weigh in here in a second, we need to make sure that we can find a way for the city and the county to be truly married together on this. And I do think, and I have voiced my opinion before, that having this be a countywide service where one agency is responsible to the entire community, whether it's through the chief, in those moments he is a Dougherty County employee, or whether it's whoever, it doesn't matter to me. What's more important to me is that whoever embodies that role is responsible to an elected body, as well as to people that are representative of the entire community. Because I saw where that conflict arose previously, and that's not meant to be negative towards any human being. It's just, it was a product of different roles and responsibilities. And so, and I would ask Mr. McCoy, is this an item that we can have, and I'd like to get your recommendation, on the county has discussions with the city in a collaborative way to try and iron these issues out. And I do think it is important for us to understand that when the emergency management agency was originally put together, and I think nineteen ninety-two, emergency management was not prioritized in this community, it was not prioritized across the state, wasn't prioritized across the country. And historically, the county was saying, you know, we'll just contract away this, and this, and this. And I think that that is a responsibility that the county, and if you look across the state, that is a service that is provided by the county. And I am, and I want to say this, I have enjoyed working with the mayor during the pandemic, and it's been a very joint effort. I have appreciated his input, his analysis, and frankly, sharing the responsibility for reporting to the community. And I think that there is a way for us to marry the responsibilities of the chairman and the mayor in a very collegial and collaborative fashion that best delivers services for this community. And I think that is important for us to keep in the back of our minds on a moving forward basis. Mr. McCoy, I'm going to invite you, I'm going to turn to Fisher Johnson. Mr. McCoy?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I believe that you're correct in your assessment, and I believe that there are some opportunity areas relative to the emergency management plan that need to be addressed and updated, and that is something that Chief Scott and I have discussed. And I think this is an argument.
Mr. McCoy, I can't hear you.
Hello?
Yeah, I can hear you now, but I couldn't hear you.
You can hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you better now.
Okay, good deal. All right, I was saying that there are some opportunities relative to the emergency management plan. Chief Scott and I have discussed this. This is something that we've been talking about for some time now, so this isn't something that just popped up on the radar. But this is, I believe, or at least the way I see it, is the beginning of a process. And so we are starting the conversation about how to improve the efficiency of emergency management agency's operations. And so we will likely, we will definitely continue this effort, and we'll come back with some recommendations.
Fisher Johnson?
Yes, sir. Good morning again, Chief.
Good morning.
Can you read to me again, House Bill four eighty-nine?
Yes. This is only now an excerpt from House Bill four eighty-nine. House Bill four eighty-nine is quite an extensive document dealing with numerous services that the city and county has came together, such as, just a few examples, is fire protection, emergency medical services. The list is very lengthy.
Well, but just a section about the EMA Director part.
So, in the House Bill, the City of Albany pursuant to House Bill four eighty-nine, the Service Delivery Strategy- pursuant to House Bill four eighty-nine, the service delivery strategy, most recently updated in two thousand seventeen, is responsible for providing emergency management services countywide.
Okay, so as the chairman stated, it's not about the people or the personnel or performance, it's more about the policy. So these policies are conflicting in a sense?
Um, yes. What we need, what we need to do is, as far as the city, I think, uh, I'm, I'm very clear that, uh, for example, the city understands their responsibility. They, uh, you speak to the city manager, for example. She clearly understands the city's responsibility from, from years, even before I came here. She understands the city's responsibility. However, it is important that, um, the way we operate, uh, should match what is in writing. And it should be memorialized that way. So, um, at current, currently, um, we are not operating consistently with what is in writing. Uh, for example, I read to you from, um, resolution, uh, one county resolution and one city ordinance, uh, that spells out how emergency declarations are handled, for example. Uh, now, um, this is only meant to bring out what is in writing. They just show that all of these, um, areas need to be brought together. Uh, so, and then there's the emergency operations plan that has to match the resolutions. It has to match the service delivery strategy so that when we get ready to do those four things I mentioned, incident command, uh, policy group, so on and so forth. All of those things are laid out in the LEOP, and the chairman is correct. The emergency operations plan is, is more detailed. Uh, the resolutions provide you the overall, uh, direction of a government and our entity providing emergency management services. And then, you then turn to the EOP for, uh, the details, uh, the processes. Some of the things I didn't mention that would be in a, uh, an EOP, for example, would be when an incident occurs, one of the things, the first things that happen after that is a damage assessment occur. You have a damage assessment team, go out right around the city, uh, make a report on the damages. That, those damages are then brought back, uh, to the highest elected official, and they review that to determine whether resources have been exhausted to a point that we need a declaration. Now, uh, the elected official does not have to do that, does not have to wait on the damage assessment because if you were to go outside and you see mass destruction, then you go directly to, uh, a declaration because it's obvious. So those things have to be spelled out so that, um, when an incident happens, all we do is pull the EOP and we go right by what's in there. And it matches, uh, the will of the commissions.
So our current EOP you are in agreement with?
I'm sorry?
Our current EOP, do you agree with it as it is now?
No, no, it needs to be updated.
Okay.
Yes, sir, it is one of the things that hopefully we get out of this is an updated emergency operations plan. We, we need that. That document, once it's approved by both, it will have to be approved by the city commission and the county commission. Now, once that is done, then that is then forwarded to, uh, GEMA, the Georgia Emergency Management Agency, uh, for, it is, then becomes our emergency operations plan of record. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Gray?
Uh, question.
Uh, question.
Commissioner Jones?
Uh, yes, uh, Chief Scott, I understand you're the messenger here, you're not the, you're the messenger here. You said this, uh, this, uh, this House Bill four eighty-nine was updated in two thousand seventeen, is that, did I hear that correctly?
You did, sir, yes, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, here we go again. We got one bicycle and nobody wants to share it. Uh, you know, we got two different opinions, we got, we have two different opinions here from two different governing bodies here. And, and, and I hope we don't have a disaster tonight because if, if we do, we don't know who we're in charge. But I, here's what, here's where I'm coming from with this. I think we need to get an independent opinion from, 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 uh, an outsider to come in and speak with the, and to speak and ma, and make a, make recommendations at a joint city and county commission meeting so that we all can get on the same page. Because if we have a disaster tonight, you know, we'll probably spend half the night fighting on who's going, who's gonna be in charge of it. And I don't want the people of Darty County and Albany, Georgia to suffer on the county, on, 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 because we don't want to share the bicycle. So I, I, this is what I would like to see quickly, as, as soon as next week if possible, to get somebody in here so we can get a, so that we can get a, uh, get an opinion and then come up with a solution, with a plan, and implement it where the city and the county both can be on board at, uh, at the same time. That's, that's where I'm coming from with this.
Understood. Thank you, Commissioner Jones, very good comments.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may, I just want to add one thing. I, I want to make sure that, um, Commissioner knows and the community knows that if there was an event that happens today, uh, that, um, I want to be absolutely clear about this. I am in charge of emergency management, and no one should worry tonight. Um, I will, I will, uh, work with both governments. I'm doing that, I've done it through Hurricane Michael, um, and I have done it through the COVID nineteen pandemic.
We've all, we've all worked very well.
And so, uh, no one should worry because, uh, again, I am in charge of emergency management. And I want everyone to sleep well tonight knowing that.
I think that's a very good point, and very well taken, and.
Yes, this is Gloria.
I'm sorry?
Uh, Gloria, I wanted to speak when you're down.
Okay, um, no, I, I think that's very well understood, Chief. And, uh, and, and Commissioner Jones's comments regarding getting an independent view, uh, perhaps from ACCG, uh, and, and obviously, we have gotten, I don't know that we could have gotten a more independent view than from the GEMA director himself. Uh, that's obviously the most important agency as it relates to emergency management in the entire state of Georgia. That was a very good and independent report, um, and I think we need to share that information, uh, with the city.
But when you presented at, at Savannah on, on disasters, I mean, we were kind of drawing out the, the picture then of what it looked like. So I, I think you were, we were kind of teaching the, the association then. So I think GEMA would be a better source to go to for an outside agency, you know, to give us a, an opinion or a review, as they already have.
Yes, no, I, I think that's, I think that's a very good point. And it's, one of the conflicts that continues to pop into my mind is, and I want to share this. Um, as I've navigated two thousand seventeen, one of the things, and there are different views held by different people as to how all this legislation works. There's a service delivery strategy which says the city of Albany provides those services. But the view, at least that of Chief Rowe, uh, when he was, when he was the fire chief, and that of Richard Crowdes, and the state, when I spoke with them, was that when an emergency happens, he then ceases to be a city employee. He is a county employee responsible to the county agency. Now, obviously, the city of Albany provides that service by staffing a city employee there. But in actuality, as I understood it from, from Mr. Crowdes, uh, and from Mr. McCoy, we actually pay the salary. I don't know how that's handled administratively, if we, you know, we pay it directly to the city or we actually issue a check to that person. Um, during, during a disaster, and for the additional job duties. Because the fire chief, he, he has his job duties as fire chief, you know, making sure that, that his firefighter's putting out fires and taking care of fire hydrants and et cetera, et cetera. But that, um, yes, sir.
During an emergency, now, when we have a disaster such as, well, we'll just go COVID nineteen.
Yes, sir.
During COVID nineteen, um, I passed my duties.
Yes, sir.
On to, uh, the deputy fire chief, who became the acting fire chief.
Yes, sir.
Um, and my role then, uh, from March, uh, until, I, I can't remember now exactly what month I actually assumed back my duties. But, uh, during the height of the COVID nineteen pandemic in our community, I was specifically focused on emergency management.
Yes, sir.
Um, and, um, and so, um, I just wanted to, to say that because, and plus, I've sent communication to Mr. McCoy, uh, as well, as well as the city manager, uh, memorializing that, that in the event of an emergency, um, that, um, I will pass duties on and then become emergency management director twenty-four hours a day.
And, and, and have done an outstanding job as, as well. But that is one of the conflicts that exists between all these different concepts. And, um, anyways, uh, Commissioner Gaines had a question.
Yes, um, a couple of questions. I'm curious, uh, Chief, what really triggered, um, this review? If there was anything specific that triggered it, or an accumulation of disasters over time and observations that things could work differently? The second question is, um, it, it, are you saying that the service delivery agreement signed in two thousand seventeen is at odds with statutes or, or not? And, uh, the third one is, um, if, if you become the full-time, uh, emergency manager, what elected officials, by agreement or by statute, are you required to respond to or report to? So those are three questions.
Okay, Commissioner, um, let me take the, the, uh, the last two first, and then I'll ask you to re, please restate the first one. I, I didn't.
If I can remember them.
Um, the, the service delivery strategy itself is, the service delivery strategy is clear. It is, the inconsistency with the service delivery strategy is, it is inconsistent with how we actually operate. It is not that it is, it is written incorrectly. It is, we are not physically operating as the service delivery strategy.
Well, what is that conflict then? What, where is it we're not operating consistent with the, uh, service delivery, uh, strategy?
One of the reasons is, is we have an emergency now. Uh, I have been reporting directly to Chairman Kohelis, uh, through the county administrator. Um, that is in conflict, uh, with the service delivery strategy because, um, all city employees report through the city manager to the mayor. Um, it is, if you look at the rest of the service delivery strategy, you can pick out any of the many areas that are, that are enclosed in that, in that service delivery strategy. Um, I'll just take one, for example, EMS is provided countywide. It is a service provided by the county. That, the employee that is in charge of, Mr. Sam Allen, reports to the county administrator, to the board. Um, it is no different then when we look at emergency management, which is a service provided by the city to the county. That employee then reports to the city manager, to the city commission. So we, so that's where the conflict is there.
I got.
Of the, of the way that we practice, the, the practice is not consistent with what is in writing. So that's the service delivery strategy, uh, issue.
Well, can you, I, I hear you. I, um, it, it, it really boils down to, um, while you are relieved of your duties as fire chief and as city employee, you become the emergency manager, the question is to whom you report at that moment?
Yes, and, and I have.
And then, sir, yes.
And I have been, um, of course, reporting to, um, Chairman Kohelis through Mr. McCoy.
I hear you. The, the, okay, so the question is who you, the essential question is who you report to during that moment of, um, of emergency? Now, I, I still need to understand what triggered, uh, the review of, of, of this issue. I mean, how did it get started? Who, who brought this to the surface, or why did it surface?
Um, yes, ma'am. We, there, the city commission, um, established a task force to study emergency management based on the inconsistencies I've just brought out with the service delivery strategy, and also inconsistencies with the, um, county resolution and the city ordinance that is in place from nineteen ninety-two. Um, and the inconsistencies there is, is that when we have a disaster now, we had Hurricane Michael, uh, and we, and we've had the COVID nineteen pandemic recently. You, when you look at the COVID nineteen pandemic, the chairman, um, declared a state of emergency.
Sure.
Okay, the chairman declared a state of emergency. We operated under that state of emergency. Now, however, it is, that is inconsistent with the county resolution and the city ordinance because the, the resolution and the ordinance clearly says that the mayor, either jointly, uh, with the county commission chair, uh, in their absences, the county administrator, city manager, may determine that an emergency exists and thereby, um, have a state of emergency signed and put in place.
Which is also.
Chief, chief, this is at odds with the way it's done in other counties?
Uh, one other inconsistency I want to point out is our plan actually gives, uh, authority to the chairman and to the mayor to declare a state of emergency for purposes of the respected folks that they, uh, they represent, which is inconsistent.
Yes.
With the resolution which was adopted in nineteen ninety-two.
Yes.
Eons ago.
Yes.
Um, and inconsistent with the trend across the state, which is, EMA typically is handled as a county function. And I think it's important for people to realize that emergency management is not like you're going and establishing a new fire department. What it really is, is it's, it's an umbrella structure for purposes of, um, cohesively bringing all of your emergency resources within one command structure that take, that has the remarkable responsibility and authorities at the time of disaster, as are needed, for that EMA director on behalf of the entire county, so that you can pull assets from the county or the city to respond to disaster. Would you agree with that, Chief?
Uh, yes, yes, because resource, um, the attainment of resources, allocation of those resources, that is the critical piece in handling most disasters that we deal with. Um, quite differently, of course, from COVID nineteen, but.
Sure.
Uh, but, but under tornadoes and hurricanes and so on and so forth, it becomes critical to be able to, uh, dictate how those resources are, you know, are deployed.
So the agreement then is at odds with the practice, uh, generally in the states?
Correct.
Now, that, that is a, um, um, it would take longer to, to explain all of this, but, um, I believe that in, in what I've read is that we have met the, uh, the spirit of the letter, the recommendation, we admit that it is just the names tied to the pieces are not matching the service delivery strategy. For example, we have an emergency management agency, it is established. We, we have the emergency management director that's been appointed by, uh, by the chair. It has a support person, the, the EMA director becomes twenty-four, uh, full-time capacity in event of emergency. Uh, all of those pieces are in place, uh, in the recommendation. It is just the names tied to who has ultimate responsibility for those resources.
That's right, and it is, and that's an important factor because if you look at the legislation, it is the responsibility of the chairman as the chief elected official for the entire county to appoint, at his discretion, uh, the EMA director. Um, and so thus, it, you know, that, that thus resides the po, the power to hire and fire the EMA director. We then have, and that's also another inconsistency.
It is.
Uh, and because that also is most consistent with a direct report. I recognize that there's an inconsistency with the service delivery strategy, but the state law, you know, there is, and frankly, the state and how it interacts with us expects that, and in fact, we had to file a letter with the state stating who the direct report was. And so, um, that is an important distinction that is there. And then we, we have this local legislation that then says the chairman then shall appoint with the concurrence of the mayor, the city fire chief, whoever that may be.
That is correct.
And, but I still have. And, but I still have the authority under state law and the ordinance to, to appoint that in your position, which I'm very happy with you in that position. Um, but, but that is an example of yet another conflict.
Right.
Is between what, what is and is not, if that makes sense.
Uh huh. So, so there, there's a state statute that, uh, does what you just outlined. There is a local ordinance that was, uh, uh, decided in 92, and then there's a service delivery, uh, strategy, and they're all in conflict with each other.
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, it, it goes down, it go- it just goes down to one thing, it, it's just about control, who's gonna control this thing? That's what it's all about. You can sit here, you can sit here and tap dance around it all you want, but it's who's gonna control this thing? And, and, and that's, like I said, who, nobody wants to share the bias because everyone, everybody wanna control this thing. Again, I say we need to bring that person in that sent that letter to Chairman Kohelis and have him to come and sit down with us at a joint meeting between the city and the county, the city and the county, and see if we can come to a clarification together because the thief is, he is a messenger, he's the messenger here. So what we need to send down, we need to sit down and sit, and talk with the person who sent the messenger so that we can all become, become, uh, an efficient, have an efficient EMA director and know exactly what the new, what the new rules are for this game that we're playing here.
Mr., Mr. Chair, does the state law that you just cited, uh, supersede any of, any agreement or local ordinance?
I think that is, I think that has been my position, uh, though I think it's remarkably confusing.
Uh huh.
And I think that there is an argument that the local legislation is inconsistent in what powers and or authorities it may remove or seek to remove or delegate from the county of a chief elected official. Um, and I think that that is certainly, um, a position that can be taken, but rather than getting into the weeds with that, I just prefer that we, that we fix the plan cohesively and comprehensively and get a recommendation from staff and from any independent parties that we may think ought to weigh in so that we can best deliver the services to the entire community. And I will say this, um, 2017 truly highlighted, um, that sort of, the, the need for it to be countywide, or, because your first disaster destroyed 32 square miles from west to east, um, across predominantly the city, but there were areas of the unincorporated county that were harmed as well. Then on January 22nd, you had 67.6 miles, a mile and a half wide, that were ripped across the unincorporated county. And that happened within 20 days of each other, causing probably $2, $3 billion worth of damage. And, um, disasters can occur in the city, they can occur in the county, or they can occur in both, as was demonstrated with Hurricane Michael. And obviously, the entire response to COVID-19 has been countywide as well. And so I think it's best to view us, um, especially since we're not consolidated, um, this is one of the frustrations that occurs, but we do need to find a way to operate comprehensively and cohesively, so.
I hear you, Mr. Chair, but isn't it possible that, um, that the county could, through agreement, give the city the authority to operate during an emergency countywide?
Sure, you, you could, um, completely do that. I think that that, there remains a significant question in my mind whether or not that has been truly completely delegated just to the city. And then we would be at the whim of the city and elected officials who are not responsible to be elected by the citizens in the unincorporated county, and we would be completely, um, without recourse to be able to effect that. And I will say, and I'm gonna be remarkably frank.
Right.
In 2017, I watched how a conflict, uh, in the chain of command and the conflict in positions and the understandings.
Right.
And frankly, how when folks that were not supposed to be communicating with GEMA were communicating with GEMA, and, and I went back and I, and I, and I reviewed the communication, literally, we had folks from the city that were communicating to the, to GEMA that we did not need any resources. And that was, um, that was a remarkably frustrating thing for me to live through, uh, and I had to spend a tremendous amount of time and effort crawling, literally having to work the phone through the governor's office, uh, and with the higher level folks at GEMA in order to get a team down here.
Right.
And I, I, and I, I recall this because it was my 40th birthday, it was January 5th, and we had been hit on January 2nd. We didn't have any resources at all, we had 30,000 homes that were without power. And when I finally was able to get a GEMA team here within 10 minutes, they not only said it was a state, uh, disaster, but they were requesting a presidential declaration within five minutes. And in the meantime, our folks had been without a lot of help. And so I say that, um, to highlight in reality what this community has experienced. And, um, I do believe firmly that it should be and is most appropriate. And frankly, a lot of our legislation and our plan designates it as a county agency. The state believes it is a county agency. It is a county agency that is currently staffed with city folks. And that is a conflict between the service delivery strategy and what we have, and ultimately, I believe that the agency has to be responsible to elected officials that are responsible to the people that are being served.
Right.
Otherwise, otherwise you're rendered weak.
Right.
And without recourse to be able to affect the problems that need to be affected. And let me.
I hear you. Is there any reason to believe that the city would object to, to clarifying it to that, um, um, in that, in that way?
I, I think, well, I think at certain staff levels, yes.
Okay, but maybe not, okay. I hear you.
All right, um.
Thanks.
Yes, Commissioner Hudgens?
I just had a, you may have already covered it, but the letter from the GEMA director was very clear.
Right.
On how he's expecting it or suggesting it to be organized. If we don't become organized as he suggests, would that affect any future assistance from GEMA or FEMA? Just a question.
Um.
Sits us out on the table.
Yeah, um, it could, uh.
That's a concern I have.
It, it could practically, um, and then I think, I think there is like sort of the legal answer. If you're not in compliance, then yes. Most certainly, it can, it can affect your, if you're not in compliance with the state plan, then it can affect your reimbursement. Secondarily, um, I think there is, then I think there are the relationship questions. Um, and yes, uh, and, and I will, will say that the county has helped navigate a tremendous number of, uh, those relationship issues through January 2, January 22, uh, Hurricane Michael, uh, and COVID-19. And, um, I will tell you this, the GEMA director picks up the phone and he calls me, uh, in, in order to help navigate issues not only with, uh, the county, but specifically with the city and emergency management. Um, and, um, I think those are, that's a fair point.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gray.
Yeah, so, uh, as everybody's putting, uh, a lot of good comments together, I, I think you have to back up to a 10,000-foot level here. Uh, let's think if Darty County had multiple incorporated cities in it, we would have multiple governments, um, whose, which of those is gonna be in charge? The one common factor here is the fact that this, the county represents every citizen in however many municipalities we may have within the footprint of our county, uh, therefore it only makes sense that, uh, between the, the, the coverage and then the, the constitutional and governmental tie and bond between the county government and, uh, the state constitution itself should be kind of that, that overarching, um, board or, or body that, that supports the EMA as it's written in law. Um, just like in times of, uh, disaster when the National Guard is called up, uh, there are people who are working at local jobs here who now become, um, uh, national guardsmen with authority. Uh, when the Albany-Darty Drug Unit is, um, in action, uh, they are not subject to APD leadership or Sheriff's Department leadership or county leadership, they answer to the chain of command established for the Albany-Darty Drug Unit. And they function as a different, uh, entity altogether. I think the root here is just frankly infighting and, and, and trying to hold on to something that doesn't necessarily exist between, uh, you know, two governments who are somewhat competitive for one another and trying to interpret the letter of the law. I do think that the county stands on a, a platform, uh, that is both legally and operationally correct, uh, and that in times of emergency management, uh, we should have an emergency management, uh, manager, uh, that, who, whose role and responsibilities and authority change regardless of, uh, where you're employed by your day job. And, and that goes with, uh, the relationships and responsibilities for, uh, county and city elected officials and, and administrators as well. I do think, and I'll, I'll say this openly, uh, I think a lot of these issues that occur between the city of Albany, their direction and their governance, um, the county with our direction, our governance, uh, is, is slowed down, uh, because we can't agree on common vision and strategy and tactics to get where we need to go. I do think one very, another hard look at consolidation between our two governments would create efficiencies within these chains of command that would reduce this type of infighting, this type of, uh, that just, just technical bogging down, uh, on, on who does what, and we're able to be much more clear and cohesive about who does what when. And, um, and I do think that it, it has a tremendous opportunity to both save costs and create efficiencies, uh, both within operational, uh, but also financial possibilities. So, you know, Chairman, I'm, certainly this and, and other issues that have come up between the city and the county keep bringing me back to the fact that many of these things would be, um, would not be battles between two, two parties, uh, if we were to, uh, create a, a new set of.
A unified government?
Rules around a unified government.
And I know this conversation is not about consolidation, but I don't think that's the answer. I think it's personalities. I mean, people have to learn how to get along with each other within, within their, their bodies of government. I mean, it's, it's, some of this stuff is just people who are making, making decisions that without following the policy, it's not necessarily about consolidation. So I know we're talking about EMA delivery and, and, and service delivery strategies, which we have worked in so many different areas already consolidated already, and many of our service, service delivery strategies, chief, and I, I know this is not toward you, but I just wanna make, make, make this statement that consolidation is not necessarily the answer to this issue. So.
And I, I just wanna follow up and say that we can consolidate our states into a central federal government, but we choose a democracy that is closer to the people, more dispersed. Thank you.
All right, very good, um.
One, well, I'll just piggyback on that with, um, Commissioner Jones said, the conversation is not about consolidation, is we just gotta learn how to get along and submit to each other. Now, only thing, I guess, I'm sort of, for you, I think you're in a hard position. Even if a disaster, you still get your check from the city, but you have to hear what the chairman's saying. So again, it, I only wanna, we slip that in for the last month, we keep slipping consolidation in, it's just getting along and submitting. That, that's pretty much it. And I don't think we had that problem when we had Mayor Hubbard. It, it, it just rose up with the new leadership. And so I hope, I know you said on the news you had some kind of suggestion that you would, I don't know, did you share that this morning, what would your suggestion be?
I did not share that this morning.
Would, would that be uncomfortable for you? Cause I think the bottom, the, the end of the day, the chairman, the mayor, Mr. McCoy, and the city manager can sit down and work this out. And, and I guess where I guess my frustration is really coming, from my standpoint, I'm not, it's like the full commission, we're not having opposition. I guess that's kind of what I didn't, didn't really wanna say, but your full commission, I ain't got no problem who in charge. You see, whether it's you or the mayor, I, I just don't want you put, putting me in. See, I ain't got no problem with the way it's run. But the last two meetings we've had is like the city and the county commission is fussing. And, and I think people intelligent enough to know, you know, we didn't talk this thing about an hour. I mean, whether he in charge or the mayor in charge, only person I really feel sorry for is you. See, cause it wouldn't be no different if Allen was the director. Then Allen getting this check from the county, then the mayor gonna be mad because he can't tell Allen what to do. Come on now, we grown. So again, I mean, you know, whoever's in charge, I think everybody have done a great job with the last catastrophe we had. Somehow the chairman and the mayor, man, y'all worked it out, y'all pushed it through, and look what we had today. The trees up, the stumps gone, COVID, we're wearing our mask. So again, I think, you know, with, with the independent contractor coming in, we gonna waste money. You know, I think the mayor, the chairman, I think you guys are sharp, you got Spencer, you got Mike McCoy, and you got the, the city manager. I would just like, you know, Mr. Chairman, y'all get together and have a meeting, go behind closed door, put your boxer gloves on, and come out and do the best for the citizen, the city in Darty County. It, it real simple now.
Well, well.
I hate you in the middle. You know, now me and, me and Lamar tell you what to do, come on.
Well, well taken. Uh, Mr. McCoy, do you have a, a final recommendation as we wrap up discussion on this?
Yes, sir, I would just like to recommend that, uh, staff continue to work towards, uh, a recommendation that we would, uh, bring before you.
But I would like to go ahead on, piggyback now, can we, can you direct the county administrator, will you guys go ahead on and have a joint meeting? It don't have to be the whole board. For me, now I don't know about which.
I, I like that.
I think you guys will go ahead on and stop sliding down the road and say, look.
No, I think, I think that would be very good, um, and if we wanted to, we could even invite the GEMA director.
Yeah.
Um, I think that would be a good thing. Thank, chief, thank you very much, very much for your hard work on this. And let me also say this, we have the best emergency management agency in the state of Georgia.
Appreciate that.
Uh, and we have a lot to be thankful for.
Certainly the most experienced.
Most, certainly the most experienced too. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Outstanding. All right, I think that horse has been kicked enough. Next, uh, is Citizen Eugene James, who is present to discuss tree concerns. Good morning. Okay.
I'd like to say good morning to the board of commissioners.
I'd like to say good morning to the board of commissioners.
Good morning. Morning, Mr. James.
Okay. Yes, I reside in Putney Community of Darty County, and I'm writing to voice a few concerns in our areas. My first proposal is to remove a magnolia tree at the beginning of Putney Avenue. And I do understand the importance of preserving our nature of beautiful wildlife. However, the tree blocks the view of the oncoming traffic, which can pose a hazard to drivers, which could lead to an accident or possible fatalities. This concern also leads to additional proposals. Radiant Spring Road that leads into Putney Community has no, uh, little lights coming down the highway. Have access, have no access to sidewalks. They cannot visit their friends or utilize the community park unless they're walking on the highway or in the grass. And I would ask for the committee to consider this implement of, of, of these changes. And also let me add a deep concern also of the tree limbs hanging over Radiant Spring Road. I don't know if any of you have been down Radiant Spring Road lately, but there's limbs that is over that road that is dangerous. There's a pecan limb I, I know in excess of 30 to 40 feet hanging over. And due to the fact that I have pecan trees, I know how those limbs will break once they reach a certain lift. So, that is a great, great concern. Also, there's other limbs that is just, just totally covering that highway. And by me living there, and, and I've been living there all my life, I was raised in Putney. And, um, and I know that I have seen too much done out there lately that need to be done. And we also look at too, um, when I look at Radiant Spring Road, and I've been asking for years about, why can't we have lights coming down Radiant Spring Road? When you pass the Radiant Spring itself coming down south, there's no lights. That is the darkest part of Radiant Spring Road. People ride bicycles. You cannot see a person until you ride up on them. And I know we have lights all over Darty County, and, and I, and I've seen lights in, in places that really there was no real residents in there. But in Putney, we cannot get, get lights down Radiant Spring Road. So, I'm wondering now, as a taxpayer, why, what is the problem, the reason why we cannot have lights or a sidewalk for our children? And we need these things for the safety of our community. So, this is a great concern. I, just like I stated, I've lived there all my life, and I know the changes that comes there and the changes that happen. So, now, our concern now, Putney drew, the population drew. So, we need now to have some changes to done in Putney. And I asked the committee to please take under consideration of what we are looking at now as in Putney. And also, if you will, I invite each one of you to come down to Putney, turn on Putney Avenue where I live, and then come back out to Radiant Spring to the stop sign. Look to your left and see if, see if you can just pull out in that highway. The magnolia tree, that's a beautiful tree. It is, very beautiful. But we have to consider which one is the most important, a magnolia tree or, uh, lights.
Yes, sir, Mr. James, let me ask, Mr. Cook, are you familiar with this tree?
Yes, sir, very familiar with this tree. Over the past years, we've known him and actually limbed this tree up, questioned the citizens down there. It's typically historically going down Radiant Spring Road, there's, there's a lot of magnolia trees aligned that way, historical route, just designated as Dixon Highway, it's a historical road.
Uh, Mr. Cook, I can't hear you.
Yes, ma'am, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner. Historically, we, we tried to look at Radiant Springs Road and the magnolias, and people are very sensitive about the historical impact of, of those magnolia trees. We've tried to limb those up, we have limbed them up, and received several complaints about activity around those trees. I agree with Mr. James, this tree is a, is a sight distance, and we tried to do everything we could to limb it up. I have pictures that shows where the limbs are not the problem, it's the 24-inch to 30-inch trunk that creates a potential issue. I'm not sure, I haven't had, I talked to Mr. McCoy this weekend, I haven't looked at accident records for that particular intersection, I'm not sure if there's any there or just what it betrays. From a sight distance, me coming out there, it is a potential safety from a visual standpoint. It's a large oak tree, and, and we just need some guidance from that.
Can we just cut it down?
Is it protected?
Can we just cut it down?
Yeah, they're not protected out there.
I mean, if it's, if it, if it's a safety issue at that intersection, and, and I'm looking at, I'm looking at this right here, and I'm familiar with that, I just, I, isn't there a park right there?
Putney Park.
But I mean.
Do we have to give permission to cut down the tree?
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna be.
No, so the tree is on right of way, we checked the right of way, it is on county right of way. A lot of the other magnolias are on private property, long, long, the, the right of way narrows down, but we can take it down.
Can, can we move the littering sign too? Because it's, uh, it's kind of blocking your view as you.
I just, yeah, this looks dangerous. Why don't we just whack it?
We can get it.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I got one more question.
All right, anything else, Mr. James?
I got a question though.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Jones.
Is it possible for us to look at, since we are building in Radium Park, a sidewalk to connect Radium Park to the, to Putney Community?
Oh, I'd, I'd love to see, is that in the comprehensive, we were getting a comprehensive plan for Radium and Putney, and I was curious about that, Mr. McCoy and Mr. Lee?
Yes, sir, we have funding available in Splot 7 for sidewalks in unincorporated area. We are still working to develop our priority list, but Radium Springs is definitely a priority as we have had discussions about Radium Middle and children going to school there. So, we'll be coming back with a proposal for sidewalks in unincorporated area.
And also, we have T-Splot funds too, right?
Yeah, that's what I meant, T-Splot. I didn't say T-Splot, I meant T-Splot.
Okay.
Mr. James, is that address your concerns?
Yes, it do, I appreciate the committee, and you all have a nice day.
Thank you, and thank you very much, you did a great job with your presentation, by the way.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing all this up, and I think your, your comments around the growth of Putney is, is very demonstrative that it is becoming quite a, a new destination within Darty County, especially as Radium Springs continues to grow, and, and we love to see that. I, I would encourage you to just put it in the back of your mind, uh, to talk with the citizens of Putney around potential incorporation. Gives you your own governance, gives you your own tax structure, and you can trim all the trees and put all the sidewalks in Putney you want to, uh, without having to come for permission. So, you know, as you see that in other counties, as areas grow, they need their own life, their own identity.
That's right, that's right.
Certainly something to consider.
Could be the first mayor.
Yeah, but you gotta have the citizens wanting to incorporate.
Speaking of.
I lived through the friendship oak. I think we can make it through this one.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I was about to say, you know, all those things that you're suggesting there, Commissioner Gray, the people of Putney, when they said that if they had wanted to live in the city, they would have moved to the city, so they're perfectly satisfied where they are. But we have also been discussing, Mr. McCoy and I have been discussing sidewalks and, and, and like you said, in that comprehensive plan, we'll be able to reach the needs of those folks once we get that plan going. And I think everybody's happy, I think Mr. 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 James got what he wanted, and that was that tree removed, and that's what we have been wanting to do, so we get, we gonna move that, and, uh, we're gonna allow Putney to continue to grow and give those folks down there an option, whether they want to incorporate in. And all the ones I've talked to over the past eight years said that if we want to stay in the, we want to be in the city, we'd move to the city. So, let's just cut the tree and move forward.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner Jones. All right, we're gonna turn to the next item, which is Paul Forgie, planning and Development Services Director, President, to discuss the need for an ordinance for long-term care facilities in group homes in the unincorporated areas of Darty County. Good morning, Mr. Forgie.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. This, as you may, as you may remember, this is a topic brought forward by a citizen, but also just want to state that it's something that, from a planning perspective, I think it's important that you all consider broadly, anyway. I think it's something that the county probably should have an ordinance that addresses this subject outside of any citizen's interest. What I'm talking about now is the, the county, according to our zoning ordinance, the county has to make a recommendation to the Planning Commission to consider creating an, an ordinance such as I'm going to describe, and then bringing that back to the County Commission for their approval. So, this is a formality where I'm, I'm explaining what we're talking about, and then you all would make the recommendation at your regular meeting to send this to the Planning Commission. So, when I first started here in 2011, the first issue I dealt with on the city's perspective was to address regulations limiting where these types of uses, which I'll explain, can go in the city. And it's probably my oversight, I should have included the county at that time as well, because I think that, like our, your previous discussions, I think the city and county should have a unified, and for the most part, it is a unified zoning ordinance, but this is one area where the city has an ordinance that addresses this, the county does not. So, I started in 2011, and it took more than a year to have the city finally adopt this. Part of that was because there's a lot of research that went into it, I feel that this is a good ordinance that we've created. We actually had a visit by the Justice Department because of this ordinance, and they left satisfied that it was a good ordinance. So, I, I feel that this one, this area is a very litigious area, so just let me say that upfront. This deals with the Americans with Disabilities Act, Fair Housing Act, and it's easy to get yourself in trouble, to get the government in trouble dealing with this issue. You have to make sure that you do it correctly and treat everyone fairly. So, what we did was we created an ordinance governing community residences. And community residences is a term that describes non-traditional housing, things such as boarding houses, personal care homes, child caring residences, different types of housing that goes in single-family or multifamily neighborhoods. So, it's not the traditional mother, father, and kids, it's something else. It's a business, but it's a business that's allowed in single-family or residential districts. The reason being is primarily because of the Fair Housing Act. Fair Housing Act, especially in the, about 10 years ago, as funding decreased for institutions, and also institutions, we, we realized, we, the, the, the country realized that it's best for people to be put back in neighborhoods so they can live, live their lives as part of a community rather than being institutionalized. And part of the only way to do that was to require that they can live in neighborhoods rather than being forced to live in an institution. And as institutions closed, like the one in Thomasville, people were put in situations where they had to find someplace to live. So, we saw a dramatic increase in personal care homes especially in this area. And I, I haven't experienced it in the county, but I feel that it's, it's only a matter of time. Typically, the, those places want to locate in the city or in a city because it's closer to the services that their clients need. But depending on where in the county and the price of real estate, those decisions, they'll be made based on, on money. So, what we would do is we would develop or we would talk about the standards for placement in Darty County of this type of use. And currently, there is no, there are no standards for where they can go or what the process is, or there's very little restriction on this. What we do now is we have, in the city, we have an application process, and there's the zoning certification required, and the applicant is given a temporary occupational tax certificate, where then they can go and get their state license. And if they can get their state license, then they're approved for a occupational tax certificate. And again, one of the biggest complaints we heard was these are businesses, and yes, they are businesses, and they're, so the complaint was you're allowing a commercial activity into a residential area. Yes, that's true, and that is really the core of the Fair Housing Act. It's allowing people the right to live in a neighborhood that otherwise, they have no choice but to be in an institutional setting because someone needs to help take care of them. And I'm talking about personal hair, care homes specifically, but they are given that right to live in a residential neighborhood, but they do need someone taking care of them. And the only way that can happen is if it's a business. But we are including all types of non-traditional housing, just to make this more fair. We're not picking out the, we're not picking out personal care homes, we're not just regulating them, we're also regulating boarding houses and other types of uses that are not governed by Fair Housing Act. And it includes a lot of different things, there's personal care homes, community living arrangements, which is a, a legal type of personal care home, child caring institution, which is becoming more and more popular. It's a personal care home, but it's for children, it's for foster children that otherwise they don't have a, a family or parents, so they are in an institutional setting, and they are put in these houses where they can have the chance of living in a community, in a neighborhood, and growing up as normally as possible. And we're seeing more of those because there's not very many facilities in this part of the state, but there's a big need for it, so kids from Albany and Darty County are sent to Columbus to live in homes like this, where it's better, of course, to have them close to their other relatives and the community that they grew up with. Then there's some certainly more, more controversial types of housing, recovery residence, structured housing, transition, transitional housing facilities, these deals deal with convicts that are released after they serve their time, or drug rehab facilities, things like that. Some of these are not covered by Fair Housing, some of them are, so, but we're, we're lumping them all together, so we're not picking on or singling out the group that is covered by Fair Housing, we're putting them all in the same category. One of the things that we did to limit where they could go was create a distance separation, and we tried to do this so it would not be arbitrary, but that's, that's one of the things that the Justice Department wanted to talk about is, is this regulation arbitrary? We created the arbitrary number of 1,000 feet, but the way we did it was we looked at block size. And block size, in the denser areas of the city, is about 500 feet, and in the more suburban subdivisions, it's about 1,500 feet. So, the middle of that is 1,000 feet, and I feel that that's a good average. And the reason behind separating these uses by 1,000 feet is so they don't become concentrated, that benefits the neighborhood, but it also benefits the people who are in these because they are coming out of institutions. And if, potentially if allowed to, you might have five on one block, and that becomes institutional on its own. So, to get them out of an institutional setting and to prevent it from happening, the distance separation also benefits them.
Hold on before you go past that, so distance separation is about these types of houses in their distance to each other?
Yes.
But what about other, like nightclubs or churches or liquor store stuff that's not included in this?
No, it would, it, but it would be a boarding house next to a personal care facility, or, you know, it would be all of the types of community residences next to one another, but it wouldn't apply to any other type of land use. but it wouldn't apply to any other type of land use. And we do, we do require that they have a state license to operate. Boarding homes don't require state licenses, but, you know, one of the benefits in the city that this has brought about is boarding homes are, have historically been somewhat unregulated, and this is bringing up, bringing up our ability to keep track of them a little bit better and that they have licenses, and if they don't, we can work towards moving them to another place or. So, what we're proposing, well, currently in the county, you can have a family care home, which is a personal care home, but there's no, because there's no permitting involved, we don't know if it's licensed or not, and I would bet in most instances they're not, but you can by right have a family care home of six people or less in most residential districts in this, in the county. Anywhere you want, you could have 10 on a block, we have no say in where they go or how they go there. You can have a group care home with special approval in most residential districts, and that's seven to 15 people. And that, because it comes to the level of special approval, there would be more input based on staff and the county. And a congregate care home is allowed 16 and up with administrative review, so, and special approval depending on the district. So, there is more regulation, but the six or fewer people can go anywhere in the county with, with basically no oversight from us or you all. And what we're proposing is to allow by right, so this could occur anywhere, without any kind of distance separation, family care homes, which are two to four people. So, the reason we're doing that is because that is pretty much what a single-family home looks like, two to four people. We can't say that that's gonna be an impact, a negative impact of any type on the neighborhood of just two to four people. And five to six wouldn't necessarily, but it does require, it's a conditional use. So, we do look at the, at the neighborhood, how dense it is, what the size of the house is, how it fits into that neighborhood, so there's a little bit more oversight. Group care homes of seven to 15 are allowed in a more transitional type of neighborhood, not a completely residential, it's a cross, community residential, CR is a cross between residential and commercial. So, in a higher intensity district, more people are allowed, but again, with special approval depending on the zone. So, and those other ones, the more controversial ones, recovery, structured, transitional housing, those are allowed in the more commercial areas, not, not commercial, but transitional zone, and those are also requiring special approval. Child caring, as I mentioned, is happening more and more, and that's a conditional use in residential districts, and it's by right in multifamily districts, and up to 15 require special approval. So, now this, as I said, is something that you all have to take up if, if you choose to, to recommend that the Planning Commission consider it. That's not the last chance to have any input on it, the Planning Commission will have public hearings and discuss it and send it back to you for approval to be incorporated in the zoning ordinance if you so choose. So, and, you know, part of the issue in the county that I think we need to consider adding, not just adopting the city code, is that the county is more rural. There are situations where you have rural roads that may provide a difficulty to emergency vehicles and buses, transport vehicles, and so that's something that certainly would need to be considered in the development of this ordinance.
Have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hodges?
These proposed regulations, Paul, are they already in force in the city?
Yes, sir.
So, they are, this would mirror what's?
It would, except for any changes that come up during the discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
I got a question. How do you report, how do you report these violations once we do, if we do adopt them? How do you report it, and who do you report it to?
Well, we haven't had any to report yet, but I think if we, if we did, we would report to the agency that's supposed to be regulating those uses, but, so it would depend at Department of Corrections or Department of Human Services, who's the oversight of it.
Okay, and I'm not trying to shine a light on any particular business or, or group, but I know like in the area between, let's say, Wishman Pines Road and Moore Slappy, there's a lot of transient people that I think may have some mental health issues, and they're all kind of in one neighborhood and one apartment complex. How do you, how do you address that? Because at certain times of the month, at certain times of the day, I mean, they're just, nobody's watching over them, and they're in the parking lot, they're on the roads, and they're just, you know, walking around from back, you know. So, how do you, how do you break that kind of stuff up so you don't have a property value going down because of an overpopulation of one of these controversial groups? So, how do you report that, and how do you deal with that?
Well, I would suggest if anybody sees something like that, that they call our office, and we can look into it, or Code Enforcement, we'll work with Code Enforcement, I mean, call us, and we'll, we'll work with Code Enforcement to find out if it's legal. One of the issues in a situation like that is that three or fewer people, so three, up to three people, that are not related to each other can live together. That's a legal right of our zoning ordinance, and that's the definition of family, really, is that you can have three people who are unrelated. So, we can't legally regulate three people living in an apartment or house together, whatever their issue or, so if there's three people that might be in one of these types of homes, but only three, we have no regulation over it. So, in an apartment complex, that does present a problem where you have 10 units, and each, each unit can support three people. And I don't know, we can discuss this with legal counsel to see if there is a way of regulating it by an apartment unit, but since in a house or an apartment, three people, three unrelated people can live there, I don't know that we can legally prevent that. So, that may be where that, that is coming in.
And what percentage of that housing complex can be dedicated to that, or one particular?
Yes, you see, that, that's the issue, and because it goes back to Fair Housing, and Fair Housing covers, you know, race, religion, disability, so I think those are all equal. So, we couldn't say that three people of any sort couldn't live in more than 10% of the apartments.
Okay.
That's my view on it.
Mr. Forgie, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes. Can you talk a little bit about the public review that would be required as we undertake this change? Will the Planning Commission be required to undertake any extensive review beyond that that is required in a zoning change?
No, we, we would not, the Planning Commission would not be required to do anything more than a zoning change, because in essence, this is a zoning change. So, all that we would be required to do is this recommendation, or in the regular meeting, the recommendation from the County Commission to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission would discuss it and have a public hearing on it, and then it would come back to the County Commission where it would be discussed with a public hearing and a vote. So, beyond that, there's no requirement, but certainly we're willing to discuss it further if there's the desire to.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think it would be good to, to have Mr. McCoy ask the Planning and Zoning Department to draft up the mock ordinance for us to take a look at regarding this, but I also think it needs to include licensure for any and all of these types of facilities. Number one, a business license to operate if they're, if they're doing anything that, you know, collects revenue from either the agency that sends inhabitants of that house or, you know, if they're doing it for any type of business venture. But also, we owe it to our, our elders and, and our kids to make sure that anywhere that they're being cared for, they're under the same scrutiny as any other licensed, you know, daycare facility or adult daycare facility, so that they just don't pop up, and it should not be a cottage industry that you just do with extra bedrooms, for sure. I think it needs to be regulated.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Forgie.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other delegations that did not previously sign up that wish to be heard? Mr. Grant?
I'll be really brief. I want to say that it was difficult for me to understand everything that Mr. Cedric said. It's hot, but I think what he said, and from what I could gather, that my diehard belief in one government is really the best thing for this county, and I would like to see somebody from this commission to meet with somebody from the City Commission and see if this can be promoted, because I think it would run better, and I think it would be a cost savings to have a consolidated government.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Next, purchases or any other delegations that did not previously sign up that wish to be heard at this time? All right, purchases. Recommendation to purchase two 2021 Ford Explorers XLT for the MS Department from the lowest responsible, responsible vendor, meeting specifications, Peak State Ford out of Cedar Town, Georgia, in the amount of $33,510 each for the total expenditure of $67,020. Three qualified bids were received with the highest being $68,155.60. Funding is budgeted in the SWAS seven. Mr. Addison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. This purchases recommended as part of the normal replacement program under SWAS. We recommend approval.
Any comments, questions, or discussion?
I got a quick, two quick questions. So, P State came in, number one, 90 to 110 days delivery, and then it's 16, 18 weeks for Sunbelt? What's the days on that?
I'll have to refer to Tino.
Oh, okay, 540. 540 days, yeah. I'm looking at, I'm looking at the amount, and in something like this, I mean, $100 or so, I mean, I would want to go with Sunbelt on it, but I also see the delivery time is so long. Did they tell you why it's 16, 18 weeks?
Right, well typically, delivery time is just included, you know, on there, so we'll have an expected delivery date. The bid is awarded to the low bid.
Sir?
The bid is generally awarded to?
Yes, sir, I understand completely, but, but I'm saying this local vendor, I would rather go with that one versus the other one, but it's the time I'm looking at that's taking so long. Is that, other than the money, the $100?
Yeah, we're, we're just recommending low bid. If the board decides to do something different, then we'll execute that.
Okay. I, I would like, Mr. Chairman, for us to go with the local, when, last week, but can they do anything different with the 16, 18 week lead time? Is that something they can control?
We can follow up with you.
Okay, okay. All right, it missed $100. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely think the board should consider time of delivery for the, you know, the minimum difference of $100 in total purchase price.
Yeah. Understood. Recommendation to purchase one 2021 Ford F-350 truck chassis for the solid waste department from the lowest responsible, responsible vendor, meeting specifications, Peak State Ford out of Cedar Town, Georgia, in the amount of $38,886. Four bids were received with the highest being $40,105. Funding is budgeted in the solid waste capital outlay. Mr. Addison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a replacement of the chassis for the mechanic's truck, and the solid waste department is planning to reuse the toolbox bed portion to save money. We recommend approval.
Comments, question, or discussion? All right. Recommendation to accept the bid for the installation of a concrete trail around the pond located at Robert Cross Park for the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, meeting specifications, Zane Gray's Construction out of Leesburg, Georgia, in the amount of Five bids were received with the highest base bid being $109,152. Funding is budgeted in the SWAS seven. Mr. Addison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project is one of those that was identified in the Robert Cross master plan that was presented to the commission a while back, and we recommend moving forward with this replacement. This trail is currently crushed rock and needs to be replaced. We recommend approval.
Any comments, question, or discussion? All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Addison. Additional business recommendations to accept the annual resolution authorizing Southwest Georgia Regional Commission to execute file renewal of the annual application on behalf of Dougherty County with the Georgia Department of Transportation, the United States Department of Transportation for a grant for public transportation assistance under Section 5311 Regional Transit Program. Mr. McCoy?
Yes, sir. This is basically administrative housekeeping. We do this annually. The Southwest Georgia Regional Commission applies for this grant opportunity on our behalf. They operate this program in 13, 14 counties. They receive about $2.5 million from the Department of Transportation to provide this program, and we're recommending that you approve it, so our application is in by the December deadline.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, or discussion on that item? Okay. Recommendation from Superior Court to apply for the Swift Certain and Fair Sanctions Grant Pilot Project for Grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance/Department of Community Supervision, the amount of $33,600. There is no local match required. Substance Abuse Coordinator Patricia Griffin is present to address. Action on this item is scheduled to follow in a special call meeting. Good morning, Ms. Griffin.
Good morning, Ms. Griffin. How are you?
Doing very well. How about your sound?
Good morning. So, I'm sorry, what was your question?
Yes, I'm doing very well. How about your sound?
Oh, good, thank you. So, were there any questions about this grant that we'd like to get?
This supports substance abuse, and this is a federal grant?
It, it does, yes, sir. We were approached by the Department of Corrections in partnership with the Council of Accountability Court Judges. It would just be add an additional referrals to our program and with them providing funds for us to cover some of the treatment cost.
Sounds like a good thing.
I hope so, yes, sir.
All right, very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I hope you're doing.
Recommendation for the District Attorney's Office to apply for a prosecuting attorney grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Agency in the amount of $214,601 for use with the vocal program. There's a local match of $53,650. And I note, my good friend Greg Edwards, the District Attorney, is here, and action on this item is scheduled to follow in a special call meeting. Good morning, Mr. Edwards.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning, everybody. This is a annual grant.
This, I mean, this is one we do every year.
Yes, sir. And actually, I've been very fortunate with, particularly the Vowel Grant, we were able to get a, a part-time prosecutor, because it's always been difficult to get a lawyer to work on a grant, but now we've worked that out, and I have a prosecutor doing our domestic violence cases, and so, again, everything's going, all of my positions for victim advocates are filled, and we are going on all cylinders.
Very good. Any comments, questions, or discussion for District Attorney Edwards?
Yeah, I have one since we have him here. I know last week we were talking about finding more grant funds for Crime Stoppers. Was that, did you get to respond to us on that? Maybe I didn't get to.
Yes, I did. I looked into it, and it's not as simple as me writing a check from those forfeiture funds. There's a process that we have to go through with all forfeiture, civil forfeiture monies that have been amassed since they've made some requirements that their reporting is done. And so, I was responding back with Mr. McCoy very briefly, and I was telling him that it's doable, but there are things that have to be done.
Sure.
To coordinate. Another thing about that, and I'll go ahead and elaborate, I was looking at the open letter sent by the Chamber of Commerce to the chairman and the mayor, and I will CC that, you know, as part of all this process, and one of the things that I think that the Chamber of Commerce can do is support that, which is generally, it's, the Crime Stoppers is generally funded by contributions, and that would be one way, and I think it is a good idea to give more monies to people who are providing information, because that's going to be the best way we can get information in a lot of different situations that, you know, we're giving informants. But because it is still like a private institution, I can't just cut a check. And the other thing is it needs to be sustained, you know, one time, I can't sustain it. So, it would be best if we can get contributions coming in to sustain it, and so that's why, again.
Are there, are there grants, like national grants out there for stuff like that, or you haven't seen anything like that?
Pretty much, I think that they are operating on contributions, and again, businesses, individual donations are what sustain those things. Like I said, we, the payouts are, could match the, the level of, you know, information that, you know, we need to get to make these cases, and so I think that it would be enhanced if we can do that.
I think taking a community approach and have your nonprofits, your churches, your businesses donate or make some kind of donation monetarily to that fund could be a start to getting up those amounts.
Yes, I mean, it, it, it could use more money. You know, it's, it's a resource that can be enhanced, and I think the community can best enhance it.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Edwards, who are the recipients of forfeited and seized funds from the DA's Department?
Well, in terms of where is the money?
Right.
It's, it's in a fund that I have, which we can use for various things. In fact, we use that money, we bought our cars, we buy our training, we do all the things that are allowed under the statute with that money.
Gotcha.
We, we kind of save the county a lot of money by buying things directly that, you know, we can.
Yeah, I guess, I guess part of my thought was if, if that money is to Yeah, I guess, I guess part of my thought was if, if that money is distributed to appropriate entities under the defined use of that money, there, there could be maybe, you know, a gentleman's ask that, hey, you know, here's some forfeited funds that you're getting according to the, this program, but would you be interested in donating some of it back to Crime Stoppers to help fund this? So it's just almost like a, you know, an ask of the recipients who, who benefit from that, those forfeit, those forfeited monies and, and assets.
Well, I, I think, you know, if, and this is what I'm contemplating relative to giving some money to the Crime Stoppers processes, if I can encourage our, our business community to match that fund, again, that goes back to that, that letter from the Chamber of Commerce.
Right.
If, if I can give them some money, if I can give Crime Stoppers some money, I'd ask Crime, I mean, the Chamber of Commerce, help us and, and enhance that. So they, they were wanting to know what things can they do? And from my perspective, as a prosecutor, like I said, it will enhance our ability to make some cases. If I can give some money, they can match it, that's one thing they can do.
Yes, sir. Mr. Edwards, I want to turn, and I, I don't need any more information on the Boca program. I, I think I was there. This is the Violence Against Women Grant.
That's correct.
And I think I was, I helped write that grant with Ms., Ms. Rita.
That's correct.
So that's, I'm very familiar with it. And I was a recipient of the letter from the Chamber of Commerce, and I have noted historically, and I've, before I was getting the letter from the Chamber of Commerce, before recent outrage, I have been remarkably frustrated with the underperformance of the Albany Darty Drug Unit. And in past iterations, it has worked. And frankly, as an entity, it is a shining example of city and county collaboration. You have the DA's office, which is, obviously, you're an elected county official. You have Darty County Police Department, which is a county agency. You have the county sheriff, who is a constitutionally elected county official. Then you have the Albany Police Department. And I've said this before, and I'll say it again, ninety nine point nine percent of all drug-related crime happens in the city of Albany, period. Like, I mean, like, some happens in the unincorporated, but ninety nine point nine percent of that happens. Yet, the county, in its efforts to try and help enhance the city and the county as a whole, participates in the Albany Darty Drug Unit through the commission of, of X number of officers to the Sheriff's Department, X number of officers, officers to the Darty County Police Department. And then there's a tripartite committee where the DA, yourself, the sheriff, oh, excuse me, four, DCP, and then APD chief, all serve on the committee. Who's the current chair of the committee?
The sheriff.
Sheriff is. And right now, again, has, as has been the case, and I mean, I remember being in the DA's office, we knew that the drug unit was oftentimes where the Albany Police Department sent its worst officers because they didn't want to deal with them at the Albany Police Department. They would send them to the drug unit, and what, what would end up happening is they'd go do some knucklehead thing, they would end up getting everybody sued. Now they're not even sending their worst officers, and they have historically, again and again and again and again and again, understaffed the drug unit, which is, I think you'd agree with me, ninety nine point nine percent of, of gang activities are funded through drug activities, or largely funded by drug activities. Drugs and violence go hand in hand, drug and theft go hand in hand. And in the past, when, when I worked for you and you were the chief assistant, and, and when you were the DA and when Ken was the DA, we had an aggressive relationship between the DA's office and the drug unit. And the drug unit was actually proactively going out and serving aggressive numbers of search warrants, arresting lots of folks, seizing a tremendous number of guns, tremendous amount of drugs, and making criminals feel remarkably uncomfortable in this community. I have watched that unit go down, and, and we have great leaders. I'm going to say this, I've worked with Ryan Ward. He is a good drug unit commander. I like him, I think he's a good leader. He's a good coach with no players. And so my, my question, or I've got a couple of comments, and I've got a question. I have watched it, we had a past leader that, that was there, and I asked for some hard information about the number of search warrants and arrests that they were made. Objectively speaking, we're not arresting enough people. Like, and that is a different agents, it's a different agency or a different response than, okay, someone has robbed the seven eleven. They pick up the phone, they call in, and they go and respond. The drug unit could lit, it's like hunting over a baited field. If you had a hundred officers every single day working the cases, you could arrest an infinite number of people on these types of cases. And these guys who are dealing drugs, dealing crack, selling guns, doing X, doing Y, doing X, are the same folks that every commissioner here on this commission has to deal with on, on terms of complaints from their citizens in terms of property crimes, shootings, et cetera. And the number one tool that we have in this community that is funded by city and county efforts is historically understaffed by the city police department. And it's the one with ninety nine point nine percent of the crime problem, yet we all live with the ramifications of that. And objectively, I mean, I've looked at the numbers, Greg. Like, it's, we're not arresting anybody. We're not, we're, we're not doing enough work. So like, what at your level could you, can you do to encourage, because you're a member of this committee? I, I'm tired of it. Like, I'm sick of, I, I can't, I, I am tired of hearing, and I know you're tired of it, and you've headed aggressive efforts before. Man, what do we have to do to get the city to actually prioritize this issue? I'm tired of it. I'm absolutely, and I have watched these issues, and I've been in your office, and I've been in the meetings again and again and again and again. I've, I've been through all of that. I'm tired of being nice. I'm not tired, I, I'm like, I'm absolutely tired of being nice. Why is this not happening? What, from your perspective?
Well, you gave me a good pose of here, Mr. Commissioner. But the thing is that, as far as my office, I've actually added another, another prosecutor. So I have two prosecutors assigned to prosecute drug cases. And, you know, I had historically only had one of them, you know, to enhance our ability to break cases. Now, the issue of, of the personnel, again, my observation has been that, again, it's just difficult for us to get police officers with the Albany Police Department. That's been my, my...
And so that's an observation, that it's difficult for the unit to get officers from APD. Can we agree that APD is larger than DCP?
And we can agree with that.
We, we agree that it's bigger than the Sheriff's Department?
We agree with that.
Okay. And, and the Sheriff's Office and the, and the Darty County Police Department, yet routinely find a way to meet their obligations to staff enough officers there. So that leads me to one incontrovertible conclusion, which is that it is an intentional decision from city staff to not work with others on this joint venture. That's it. And like, this is not something that is new. It has been historic, over and over and over and over. And, and what I'm going to say is like, I would, I mean, you're the chief prosecuting officer for this, for this county and for this city. I mean, is there something that you could, I mean...
Well, here, here's, here's my observation again. And the observation is, I think, at the creation of the drug unit, the notion was that you didn't want all the different agencies working the same people, using the same informants, putting each other in danger when they're making raids at the same place and undercover. Just coordinating activity was the, was the, the basis for the formulation of a, of a unified drug unit.
Kind of like an emergency management agency.
Precisely. And so it was formulated, and now I think that technology and other things allow for better instant communication between agencies that are, are, you know, engaging in everything. I think things have changed with technology that allow us to communicate better and consolidate things better. So is the relevancy of having this type of organization, I guess, is what your challenge is, in, 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 as far as the...
Well, well, sorry, are you suggesting that we should disband the drug unit?
No, I'm not suggesting that, but I think that what you can do is reevaluate, you know, those things, that, that would not be beyond the...
Well, what does that mean? I mean, like, text messaging does not get people, like, we, there, here is the problem. It is not that we're communicating so well that we're not stepping over each other. We're not arresting enough people. Like, separate and apart from whether or not the original reason was to make sure that officers, our problem is not that we have too many officers arresting too many people and we don't want them stepping on each other's feet. Our problem is that not enough people are going to jail. Like, objectively speaking, I, I had Major Dyess present us with the information two years ago, or before Ryan Ward was on, and it was provable, it was provable that our, that our number of arrests were going down. At the same time that our backlog in Superior Court in litigation was going up, our number of search warrants were going down, and that our street crime, gang crime, shootings, murders, homicides, all objectively going through the roof. So what I do know is this, and I, I mean, I stayed at a Holiday Inn last night, and I used to be a former prosecutor, I was pretty decent at it, that folks that buy guns and sell drugs shoot each other.
True.
That's, I mean, that, it's, it's not rocket science. And that they commit crimes, they commit violent crimes, and more folks that, that sell drugs and shoot guns, they go to jail, the better off the community is.
Well, here's what I want to say to that, Mr. Chairman. Number one, going back to the whole notion about personnel, there is a shortage of personnel. I think the sheriff has issues with his personnel, he's not giving new deputies...
But he still staffs the drug unit. I've talked to him.
And Lisa, again, so that issue is where you all are at in terms of getting the obligations met by the different agencies. I mean, I, I, I'm not sure how I can help in that.
Is there, I mean, but, but, I mean, you carry a pretty big bully pulpit, and, and what I'm, what I'm sort of asking and imploring, because I, I know how good a...
If I ask them to hire more folks and send more folks, and yes, yes.
Yes, please, please, please do.
Now, as far as dealing with the defendants, I have advocated, and I, it's more of a legislative thing, is that we, we get legislation that allows for mandatory minimum sentencing for certain crimes, particularly gun offenders. It's been my observation, and this is what I've been advocating, is that we have laws that will make mandatory minimum sentencing. Guns have been, what I submit, have been the currency of the underworld now.
Yes.
They use guns for, for drugs, for sex, for money, for more drugs, for more guns, better guns. They trade guns, that, you know, it used to be cigarettes, nice guns, and that's the thing on the streets. I have advocated that we have, in the state level, the ability to prosecute, like, we've, we've been referring to the feds. When we have the gun offenders, if they have X amount of history, we send them to the feds, and they, they get mandatory minimum sentencing, which, you know, stops that.
And I, and I appreciate those legislative, and, and I also will say, and I don't know if this is possible, but you've helped coordinate this before, and I remember it, you know, under Ken and under you, the DA's office frankly is, is oftentimes the, the quarterback. And, and past, in the past, when that impetus has come from the DA's office to suggest the drug unit, we want to do, and we'll help coordinate, you know, multi-agencies, I want to carpet bomb this city and county with search warrants for folks that are, you know, related to these gangs, this, 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 and we go take, take down twenty five targets in a day, and it would send a ripple effect across the community. Is that something, and I know you couldn't talk about it right now and right here, but I sure would love to like, turn on the news and see that the Darty County DA's office and folks in, 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 in their, their jackets are out there coordinating with the U.S. Marshals Office, the U.S. Attorney's Office, APD, DCP, the Sheriff's Department, you know, a carpet bombing of search warrants across this community and, and make folks, make folks that are good citizens feel safe and people that are criminals feel scared.
And Mr. Chairman, that's what I'm saying. If I had those teeth with legislation that puts people in jail and keeps them in jail, and, and when I'm targeting, and those folks who are already recognized are the ones that should not have guns, convicted felons, we want to target illegal guns, and we want to target...
I understand, I understand, but it's still a crime to do these other things.
Right.
And I'm not, I just...
But yeah, I, 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 I got you.
Yeah, I got you.
And I understand what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
And yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
And that's what we'll do.
Thank you.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Because again, like I said, I, I, I think that we can, we can take an aggressive stance, and, and we have some things in place, and we are working with the federal authorities as we speak.
Yes, sir.
And, but I will take your direction...
Thank you, please.
In, in this particular issue, but I want y'all to help me get the legislative...
And I would tell you what, if you, if you will send us whatever your write-up is, we'll include it in our, our legislative, um, um...
Agenda.
Agenda?
And because, I mean...
We'd be happy to do that.
And that's the thing about, and I am going to be meeting with the City Commission in the very near future, and I'm going to be making some of the same suggestions about these kind of things. And in particular, like I said, giving us the teeth that will, because guns are, are killing us, you know, we, we're a gun...
Literal.
Written, we're a gun-ridden community, and anything that we can do to curb gun violence is what I'm trying to, you know, get on the table. And earlier, we had asked for a, a gun or a violence grant that you all have approved, so we're still waiting to see if we can get that. That's still pending. But like I said, I need that, we need that kind of legislation because gun culture, I mean, drug culture and gang culture centers around guns, being that's the thing that we have to kind of fight. And so I think we need those teeth as a deterrent, you know?
Sure.
You know, I, I really want them to not get guns. I want them deterred from having guns, as, you know, deterrence is the most important aspect of our triad of, of the criminal justice system, prevention, intervention, and restoration. Preventing them from using guns is the best thing that we can do. Intervention with the teeth that I'm asking for, the blanket, attach that we can blank, we can, we can ask for, and then we got to deal with the restoration.
Right.
Back in the community.
So, so I'm going to go a little out of the box. Recidivism is one of our major issues, which you just mentioned, because there are not enough support from the courts to keep people in jail long enough for these violent crimes that they're committing. And where do they end back up? Where they know they can get a, a start? If, if they don't want a fresh start, if rehabilitation doesn't work, they're coming back to the same environment with the same players, doing the same thing to get their life started back. As a county, we can't necessarily change the law and, and give you the teeth you need. But, you know, from a, a fairly out-of-the-box perspective, you know, what if as a county we feel so strongly about the theft of firearms and the utilization of stolen firearms that we're willing to prevent people convicted of those crimes from coming back in Darty County and banishing them from Darty County?
Well, that, that's a sentencing decision.
Right.
And...
But if, you know, if, if our wishes are that strong, and we go to the courts with that, with the understanding that we will no longer put up with this type of recurrent lifestyle from many people who live and operate this way in Darty County, it may make some kids think twice about breaking in a car and stealing a gun.
Sentencing, well, sentencing decisions are for your, your judges.
Yep.
And, you know, the one thing that kind of flies into my, my desire to have mandatory minimum sentencing is that judges generally want to retain... minimum sentencing is that judges generally want to retain the ability to dispense what they feel are appropriate sentences, or the parole board, they want to.
Hundred percent agree.
My notion of mandatory minimum sentencing for gun offenses kind of flies against.
Circumference, yeah.
Right.
But, you know, I think it, it.
Well, if they can't do their part to help us accomplish the goals we need done in Darty County as part of the entire criminal justice system, then, you know, the state through legislative changes can make them do things, which then takes their, their freedoms as, as jurists away from them to make those decisions. So it can be a conscious voluntary decision to enforce, you know, stiffer penalties that we're asking for within our county, or they are elected officials, you know, we can certainly work to find people who would serve our community well and not feel quite as abashed about giving out harsher sentences because we need that to happen in our community to take our streets back.
Well, of course, judges are elected officials and.
Exactly.
But that, that again is, you know, when, when, when they are elected, they, they take it to heart that they are dispensers of justice and they are looking at things hopefully fairly and fully neutrally. So those, those are the issues that they face.
And I would certainly want them to, to use, to use all the facts. They, they know the individual's history. Jurists don't always, or the jury doesn't always understand past convictions and, and criminal activity and what they're also under suspicion for, they haven't been caught doing or charged with yet. And, and that does present a problem because you can't treat the whole criminal, you got to treat the criminal for what they're being charged with today and weigh the outcome of your decision based on that. But where, for these more severe offenders that keep coming back, the same names and faces, you know, we should go ahead and, and be prepared to run them out of town on a rail.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, but then we, we will move forward with, uh.
Thank you very much, and we were gonna, I suspect we're gonna prove your grant.
And I do have the.
Paperwork to be signed.
Paperwork to be signed.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Mr. DA, can you come up with a recommendation, send Mr. McCoy on how much, you know, to, with the matching funds, if you wanted to contribute to the Crime Stop? You know, you ain't got an answer today, I'm saying. Then that'd be something that we can start working toward and maybe coming back, you know, presenting to the chamber and the community, so if you would. But I don't want it to die.
Like I said, I, yeah, I, it, it, it needs to be sustained, and like I said, I can't sustain it, even with my contributions, but, you know, it should be sustained by contributions from the community. I've worked with Judy Randall, who is the person, the chair, and she, she's a leader in the community on, on this issue. And so like I said, getting them to help that way is one thing they can do in addition to other things that I was going to articulate in my own responsive letter to them, but I hadn't gotten around to doing it, but it was my intention to do so. And, and so we'll, we'll be looking at some things that they can do.
Yeah, just come up with a number, you know, after you brainstorm and say, what is ten grand, five grand, et cetera?
Right. And like I said, a bigger payout should be available for, for the more significant cases. Now, to be, you know, just totally frank, now, there, there've been some large rewards available for some homicides, you don't, you still haven't gotten any information, but I think on a, on a day-to-day level, we can improve our results with some more money.
I appreciate that. Mr. McCoy, did you have something to add?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to let the board know that the chamber is looking to have a, a meeting to further discuss crime and these types of issues, and I'm not sure if Mr. DA has been invited to this meeting, I'm certain.
He has. I spoke with the chamber president the other day.
Okay.
It should be set for November nineteenth.
All right, well, I'll, I'll be happy to, then I can articulate what I'm saying rather than writing a letter, and, and tell them some of the.
You're invited to the party.
They can, they can do the help.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Greg.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your hard work. All right, Mr. McCoy?
Nothing further, thank you.
Mr. Lee?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gray?
I've said enough, thanks.
Commissioner Hudgens?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir, I want to apologize to, uh, uh, Mr. Scott Addison. Mr. Addison, I was looking at the wrong bid information when I was talking about bid twenty-one zero one eight. It was on the back of another sheet, so I apologized, and I was asking a question, I don't think you understood I was coming from. I was on the wrong sheet. I'm sorry. And I got a ribbon cutting coming up. What day is that, Mr. McCoy, you remember?
We're working on Thursday, but we'll confirm that later today.
Ribbon cutting for C W Heath Park. They, they finally.
Awesome. Awesome, thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
Nothing.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes, at the last commission meeting last Monday, I asked when I could hear something from our county attorney on the properties on Leary Road, and I'd like to raise that question again. Mr. Lee, if, if you just would call me privately, or if you'd like to reach the board, whatever, but just let me know when we can get an update, please.
Yes, Commissioner Gaines, I forwarded a letter from Commissioner Lee that was addressed to Larry Cook regarding those three properties, but they're gonna be coming down.
Oh, you forwarded the letter to?
The, you, and then I copied the rest of the board immediately after last week's commission meeting.
Yeah, Commissioner, I got a, I got a copy of it, so check your emails, it'll show you the, the advances we've made on taking those houses down.
Okay, I'll check the emails, I, I, I obviously missed it. Sorry about that.
All right, um, thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Uh, yes, a couple of things, Mr. Chairman, um, I, you know, I hope that in two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, the county and the city commissioners will sit down from time to time and discuss the issues where we can find common ground on, and work together on behalf of the citizens of Albany and Darty County. And it's also my hope in two, in twenty twenty-one, that our law enforcement agencies and citizens will take our city and county back from all these bad actors who are killing and terrorizing our city and county. Those are my, those are my, the two things that I hope for in twenty twenty-one.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Jones. All right, we are adjourned, and I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the Darty County Commission Special Call Meeting for November ninth, twenty twenty. Begin with the roll call. For the record, I note that Commissioner Gray, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Hudgens are present, Commissioner Gaines, and Commissioner Jones, y'all still on the line?
Still on the line. Here.
All right, very good. Two, two matters of additional business, consider for action, recommendation from Superior Court to apply for the swift cert and fair sanctions, grant pilot project grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance slash Department of Community Supervision in the amount of thirty-three thousand six hundred dollars, there's no local match required. Is there a motion?
Most approve.
Motion to the second? Any discussion? There being none, we'll call the matter for a vote. Those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
All right.
Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the recommendation from the District Attorney's Office to apply for a prosecuting attorney grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinated Council Agency in the amount of two hundred fourteen thousand six hundred one dollars for use with the Boca Program. There's a local match of fifty-three thousand six hundred fifty dollars required. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to the second? Any discussion? There being none, we'll call the matter for a vote. Those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, we're adjourned.